...that I prepared for you. Okay, so as we're kind of like getting through more stuff in class review, these are gonna get like a little more to the hard ones. This one has a couple of weird ones, but most of it won't be too bad. Um, if functions are parallel, what's the same on them?
The derivative.
Okay, the same slope, which means that you would set the derivatives equal. That is correct. Set derivatives equal. So look at number one. Says, "Find the value for which the line tangent to the graph is parallel to the line." So remember, parallel means same slope. That means we're gonna find f prime of x. We're gonna find y prime, and then we're gonna set them equal to each other. What is the derivative of negative 2x?
Negative 2 plus 1 over x.
1 over x for the second part. What's the derivative for the 1/4th x minus 2?
1/4.
Only 1/4, good. And then from there, you're setting those equal to each other. Yeah? So I'd have negative 2 plus 1 over x equals 1 over 4. Okay, we're gonna add the 2 across, that's good. So I'm gonna plus 2 here to cross it out. And then rather than putting a 2 here, I wanna make that into fourths. So I would times by 4 over 4 and make it a what?
8 over 4.
8 over 4 plus 1 over 4 is 9 over 4, good. So negative 2 plus 2 cross out, I have 1 over x equals, and then 1/4th plus 8/4ths is 9/4ths. Then remember the rule we've talked about. If you flip one side, you just flip both sides. So flip here, that would be x, flip here, 4/9ths. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, look, read through the next one, and I want you to see if you can do something. You should see your keyword "parallel" here.
Would you take the xq plus the h of x equals negative 2?
Okay, no.
Do the derivative?
Okay, I am gonna take the derivative, that's a start. So parallel means that they have the same slope, right? So let's take h prime of x. What would that be?
3x squared plus 2kx.
Plus 2kx. Okay, now that's the slope anywhere. When do I want the slope?
Negative 2.
At negative 2. So I can go ahead and plug in negative 2 as my next thing. And it would be 3 times negative 2 squared. What's negative 2 squared?
4.
Times 3 is?
12.
12. And then I plug in a negative 2 here?
Negative 4k.
Negative 4k. Now notice, we still have a letter, and we don't know what that is. So we're gonna have to set this equal to something. Okay, what are we parallel to?
The line that contains?
A line that contains? 2 points. How do you find the slope of a line? What do you need? 2 points, right? So if I want this to be parallel to my line, then rather than giving you the equation, they're just being sneaky and giving you the points instead.
Oh, so rise over run.
Rise over run, that's right. Or you could use your formula. Remember that slope for a line is y2 minus y1 over x2 minus x1. Now, if you ever forget that formula, you can always like graph the points, you know, and then just kinda count. Okay, but y2 would be 15 minus y1 is 3 over, then it would be 4 minus 1. On top, what's my slope? 12 on bottom is 3, 12 divided by 3 is 4. So if I want this to be parallel to my line, I need my slope to be equal to 4. And then from there, you would solve. What will we do first? Negative 4k equals negative 8?
Divide it by 4.
Yep. So divide by negative 4 on both sides, and we would get k equals 2. So remember, when you see parallel, you're taking the derivative and you're setting it equal to something, whether it be a slope that you have to find, another derivative, something like that. Okay? Now remember that if you're gonna be, if you're gonna be, um, what does it say? Oh, tangent, you have to have 2 things in common. You have to have the same slope and the same point. Okay, so if you remember what tangent means from like whenever you took, I don't know, probably geometry. Okay, is that if you have a curve here, you have to have the same point and you have to have the same slope. Okay, no matter where you are on that line, let's say my tangent line's here. I would have to have the point and the slope in common. So not only do the derivatives have to be the same, but the originals have to be the same as well. Okay, so look at that next one. It says, "Consider the function. Find k so that we'll be tangent to the line." So I'm gonna have to do 2 things. I'm gonna set the originals equal. So that would be x squared minus kx equals 4x minus 9. And then I'm also gonna have to set what else equal? Set the derivatives equal. What is the derivative of x squared minus kx? Remember, k is just a number, we just don't know what it is.
2x minus 4.
Uh huh, minus k. Cause remember, that's like kx, k is your number, we shouldn't know what it is. And then what about the derivative of 4x minus 9?
4.
4. Okay, from there, 2x is gonna be, um, 2x minus k is 4. So let's think about what could we do from there?
So 2x equals 4 plus k the rest.
Okay, 2x equals 4 plus k. Now, let's actually pause for a second here. On this, right now, what we're trying to do is solve for x, yeah? Look at your equation. How many times am I gonna have to plug in x? 3 times. What if I solved for k instead? I would only have to plug in 1 time. That's better, right? You could, oh, I had not thought of that. I was gonna do a substitution. Do it that way and see if you get the same answer. Okay, but, so what I was gonna say is we can now just solve for k instead. So k would be 2x minus 4. And then I would come back over here to this other side, and I would do a substitution. So if it's 2x minus 4 for my k, I would plug that in right here. So I would have x squared minus, then when I get to my k, I'm gonna plug in 2x minus 4. x equals 4x minus 9. Okay? So from there, I'd have x squared. Now, we kinda have a weird distribution situation going on here, but it's minus 2x times x. What would that be?
Negative 2x plus 4.
Negative 2x squared, right? And then I would have negative, negative 4. It's really a plus 4 times x would be plus 4x. So far, so good? Okay, combine some like terms here. What is x squared minus 2x squared? 1 minus 2. Negative x squared. And then plus 4x equals 4x minus 9.
Can you not cross the 4x out?
I am gonna cross the 4x's out, cause when I try to get everything on the same side to factor, my minus 4x's cross out. Then I'm just gonna get rid of my minuses here. If they're both negative, times by negative 1. And if x squared is 9, then x would be what?
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus 3. And then you would come over to your second equation, and now that we know what x is, we could go back and find k. Okay, so my k would be 2 times x is 3 minus 4. 6 minus 4 is 2. So x equals 3, k equals 2. That would be 1 solution. And then what about if x was negative 3? That'd be negative 6 minus 4 more. So if x is negative 3, that would give us negative 10 for our k. Now, remember that those have to both be, um, they have to be touching and they have to be tangent. So we know those are gonna be the same at both of those combinations. Okay? Now, let's go ahead and double check. If we plugged in 3 and 2 here, what is 3 squared minus 2 times 3?
Uh, 9, 6, 3.
3. Okay, now plug in the same pair here. Plug in 3 there. 4 times 3 is 12, minus 9, that comes out to be 3, right? Okay, so that one worked. And then if we checked it on the second pair, negative 3 squared here, what would we get?
9.
Minus our k was negative 10 times negative 3? So I'd have 9 minus 30. What's that? 9 minus 30 is negative 21. Let's make sure that's the same on this side. So I plug in my negative 3. What is 4 times negative 3? Minus 9 more? Negative 21. So both of those are gonna work. Okay? But you would have to pick both of those pairs together. All right, next one. Ooh, I scribbled all over mine. What did it say? X plus y?
In the x, y plan, the line, x plus y equals k. But k is a constant. It's the graph of y equals x squared plus 3x plus 4.
Okay, you know what to do, right? If they're tangent, what are we gonna set equal? 2 pairs of things?
The original plan and the derivative.
Now, in this form, can I use it? But you're 1 step away. What do you need to do with the x to get y equals by itself? Yeah, so y equals, I would make that negative x plus k. So you're gonna set 2 things equal. You're gonna set the originals equal. That will probably be used second. And then you're gonna set the derivatives equal. And what's gonna happen to k when you take the derivative? It's gonna be gone because it was a constant. So set your derivatives equal and your originals equal. And I'll bring you a little cookie. Or if you prefer a cheese ball, I can get those.
They're expired soon.
Okay, they're expired like 1 week.
Well, no!
And they just expired after you are already eaten them, okay? No one knew they were expired until...
That explains so much.
Oh my gosh! Lauren, you can't hide not give you a candy.
Girl! Lauren, your head! We were eating in April!
Are you sure it doesn't say 2019?
That's a lie!
18.
Oh my!
Girl! Fine. I'll throw the cheese balls away. That is sad.
I'll do it for you. Still have to show her?
Yes.
Say bye.
No, I'll still eat them. I sneak them.
There's chicken there. There's chicken there.
These balls, they never expire.
He's a total moron.
It's fine, you haven't eaten them. Who knew? Hopefully, super bowl, let's don't expire. Okay, you're setting the originals equal and the derivatives equal. And you have some little choices. Remember, you're finding the value of k, so you may have to find x first, but then you'll use that to get k. You're welcome. Want more of these? Yes.
How are you doing derivative for x plus y? What'd you do?
You have to move the x across. So it'd be y equals, and then?
You wanted to do dy dx.
You could, but think about your derivative would be 1 plus dy dx equals 0, and then you just move the 1 across. So. Okay, so your derivative's the derivative of the polynomials what? Of this one.
Oh, uh, 2x plus 3.
And then the derivative on the other side, remember, we solved it for y, so your derivative's just negative 1. So then you would've added the 3, or minus the 3 across. Negative 4x is negative 2. Yeah? And then we know their tangent is negative 2, so then you set the originals equal, plug in that extra thing you know now to solve for k. So it'd be y equals negative 2 squared plus 3 times negative 2 plus 1, and that needs to equal negative, negative 2 plus k. So then you would set the originals equal. Negative 2 squared, what do you get? 4 minus 6 plus what? What's 4 minus 6?
Negative 6, uh, negative 10.
Plus 1 is negative 1. Other side, you have like a double negative situation going on over there. So negative, negative 2 is normal 2, but then when I bring it across to the other side, it would be a what? Minus 2. So it'd be negative 1 minus 2 more would be negative 3. Okay, look at the next one. We want equations. Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. Um, we want to write the equation for the tangent line at its x intercept. What do you think we need to find first?
A slope.
Okay, we need points and slope, but where? At the? And you're gonna have to find those first.
Y has to be 0.
Y has to be 0, very good. If you want an x intercept, you let y be 0. And then if you want a y intercept, you let x be 0. So if I set this equal to 0? Yes, 2x, what's left over?
2x, x minus 2.
Okay, so what are my 2x intercepts?
x equals 0 and x equals 2.
x equals 0 and 2. Then remember, the things that you need are a point and a slope. Let's do 0 first, cause it's gonna be easy. If I want my point, it'd be 0 comma something. Plug in 0, what would you get?
0.
0. Actually, hold on, if these are x intercepts, we kind of automatically know the points, right?
Oh, yeah.
What's the other point?
2, 0.
2, 0. We are gonna end up writing 2 equations. So if it's at its x intercepts, that means we're definitely gonna have more than 1. Sometimes they'll put the s in parentheses to kinda make it like, you don't know if there's 1 or 2. But if they give you an s there, you know it's more than 1. Okay, then from there, we need our derivative. So our slope would be y prime, which would be what?
Uh, 4x minus 4.
Okay? Then when we plug in 0, what are we gonna get for that?
It is 4.
Yep. And then what about when we plug in 2?
8, 4, 4.
8, so that'd be 8 minus 4 is 4. And then from there, for both of your tangent lines, remember, you can leave them in point-slope form, but if it's multiple choice, they might require you to solve it to match. So it'd be y minus 0, negative 4, x minus 0. And then the other one would be y minus 0, positive 4, x minus 2. Those would be your 2, uh, equations. Hopefully, you wrote little. Yeah? Yeah, so we found our k over here. Our x was negative 2.
But it's just asking for k, then why would it just be?
Because you have to bring that 2 together.
Cause that was 2 plus k. So it was originally this. It was, uh, 2 plus k, and then I had to minus 2 on both sides to get k by itself. Does that make sense? I was kinda lazy with how I wrote it. All right, turn over to the next page. Oh, ooh, good. Okay, speaking of the dy dx stuff. Okay, what's, uh, what rule are we gonna need for this one? Okay, go ahead and set it up. You know how to do product rule. Okay, so you're gonna need, and now it's also a review here too. The reason you need the dy dx crap is cause you can't get y by itself. You have some of the y's with the x, you have some of the y's in the cube. So if you can't get y alone, dy dx is your destiny, okay? So your u is x, your v is y squared? What's the derivative of u?
2y dy dx.
Okay, yeah? That's okay. Oops, 2y dy dx. So you'd have x for your first part, y squared for your second part. Derivative would be 1, and then 2y dy dx. Okay, so let's set up our product rule, so it would've been, uh, okay, y squared can come first, it doesn't matter. So 1y squared plus, then that'd be 2 times x times y. I'm gonna go ahead and order them, and then put my dy dx last. What about this next term?
Minus 6y squared plus 4.
Dy dx, right? Plus 4? And then derivative of 8 is what? 0, good. Then we would take all of our dy dx terms, get to stay, but everything without that has to go to the other side. And then remember, when you do that, they will change sign. So you'll have dy dx in the front. I'm gonna keep my 2xy minus 6y squared. But then this term I'm underlining and this term I'm underlining are gonna have to move across. So it would be minus y squared and then minus 4. Then I'm kinda setting that up to be a fraction, cause remember, this junk right here is gonna go right here when I solve. So I'd have to divide by that on both sides. So dy dx is gonna equal, uh, negative y squared minus 4 over 2xy minus 6y squared. Yep, and?
Lauren?
Yep.
Hi.
So you'd have dy dx, it says at 2 comma 0. And so then on top, I'd have negative 0 squared minus 4 would be negative 4. And then on bottom, uh-oh, 2, 0, what's gonna happen? You'd get 0 on the bottom. I think I copy and pasted this and didn't change the point. But I think what I meant, look at part A. It actually doesn't ask you to do it at the point. What does it say? Find the instantaneous rate of change at any point? So we would be done right here. Okay? Huh? For B, we're gonna keep going. But for A, you would be done right here. I think I just forgot to take that off. Okay? Now, for part B, what does it say? Find the slope of the line at the point where y is what?
0, second x is 2.
Okay, so let's check, cause remember, I copy and pasted this. So if y is 0, come back to right here. You should be able to find that on your own. So it'd be x times y is 0, minus 2 times 0, plus 4x is 8. And actually, yeah, it does come out to be 2. Cause that crosses out, that crosses out, x is 2. It was so fun, though. Living in the moment, you know? Okay, and so then you would say it's undefined. But they will pick a point where it really has a slope. Bad job, Ms. Reiner. Okay? Um, all right, go to part C. We wanna find where it's horizontal. What part of the equation do you set equal to 0 if it's?
Top.
Yes. Okay, horizontal means that you want a 0 slope. And so remember that you have to set the top of dy dx equal to 0. Now, what if I wanted it to be the bottom equal to 0? What would the slope be? Not horizontal, but vertical.
Straight line?
Very good, a straight line, yes. Up and down. Okay, so I would set the top of that equal to 0. Negative y squared minus 4 equals 0. I would add my y squared across to the other side. Can you square root a negative number? Only if it was imaginary, but AP test, you don't have to worry about that. So you would say, "No real solutions." So there are no horizontal tangents. Okay, but remember, for horizontal, you're setting the top equal to 0. All right, check out your next one. We're finding dy dx in terms of x and y. Notice, there is no way for you to get y by itself there. So you're gonna have to take the derivative and solve for dy dx. What's the derivative of 2y?
2dy dx.
2dy dx? Plus, what's the derivative of 4cos y?
Um, negative 4cos dy dx.
Close. Sin y. You said cosine again.
Oh.
Okay, and then on the other side, derivative of x?
Uh, what?
1, derivative of plus 2?
0.
Gone. Okay, from there, both of those have a dy dx. That means neither one of them has to move. So I can take my dy dx out to the front. That would leave me with my 2 right here, and then my minus 4sin y, 1. Bless you. Then from there, what would you do? Boom, bottom, yeah? 2 minus 4sin y. And then actually, the reason, if I can just go back for a second, um, it could say find dy dx, but I changed the wording on A to say on this one, instantaneous rate of change. Remember, that means slope. So that's the exact same thing. So some people on the test didn't know what that meant. So that's the derivative, okay? Um, so from there, it says, "Find where the tangent line is vertical." What part are we setting equal to 0? Okay, go ahead and set it up. You can do it. So you're setting the bottom equal to 0, and then try to solve. Yep.
Yeah, so 2 minus 4sin y equals 0.
2 minus 4sin y equals 0.
So negative 4sin y.
Okay, what were you gonna say, Miriam?
So it was like sin y equal?
Yeah, so I'm gonna add my 4sin y across. So I'd have that. And then you're getting the half from dividing by 4, that's perfect. So then if sin y equals a half, either you hopefully can do hand trig or unit circle, but sine's on bottom. So which finger is gonna give me 1 sine finger on the bottom?
This, whatever this is.
Pi 6. Cause it'd be 0, pi 6, and that gives me 1 on bottom. So it says, "Find the values of y." It would be pi 6. Now, if it said, "Find the points," you might have to go back and plug that in to get the x that goes with it. Okay, next one says, "Find the x intercept." How do we find an x intercept? Let y be 0. Okay, so I want you to find the x intercept, and then we're gonna write the equation of the line at this point. And now, where do you find the other half of the point? Do you use the dy dx?
No.
No, you need to go back to the original, right here, this thing. So if y is 0, then I would have 2 times y is 0 plus 4cos 0 equals, then x we don't know, and then plus 2. Now, does cosine 0 cross out? No, it does not. Cosine of 0 is? 1. Hold on, cosine of 0 is 1. So 1 times 4 is 4. You're getting to the final answer, minus the 2 across, and it is gonna be 2.
No, I did 2 times 0 is 6. I don't know why.
Now, if that was an x intercept, what's the ordered pair? We know the x and we know the y now, right? 2, 0. Good. And then what do we need to find additionally with that? Slope, very good. So that would be dy dx, line, 2, 0. And then you're plugging in right here. So it'd be 1 over 2 minus 4sin of 2. Oh wait, that's a 0. And what is the sine of 0? Ooh. So that'd be what? The whole slope is 0? 1 half, very good. And then using your point and your slope, you should be able to write your equation, your tangent line. So y minus 0 equals a half x minus 2. Good? Remember all this stuff? Now, actually, I was a little lazy a second ago, and I don't wanna be lazy, and I don't want you to be lazy. Is there another place on the unit circle where sine is a half? Because if you look right here, what is our domain? Okay, let's think about, so set up your little thing. So here's pi 6. All students, take calculus, it's gonna be here. So if this is 6 out of 6, this would be 5 pi out of 6.
See, I was right.
You were. Okay, so remember, especially with trig, you're gonna have repeats on those. So just? Usually, you have to find both of them. But they would give you a point for setting this equal to 0. That's usually where you get your partial credit. If you don't find both of them, you lose it. But if you set it equal to the right thing, usually they give you a point for that step. Which is why it's important that you write that step down, right? Okay, next one. Um, okay, we have a dy dx. We want d squared y dx squared. What are we doing? Different. And now, if this is already dy dx, we only need to differentiate it once, cause they already gave us the first derivative. What rule are we gonna need? Product rule and chain rule. Product rule and chain rule. So go ahead and set that up for me. So I would have to break this up into two parts. So u is three x, v is e to the four y. What would u prime be?
Three.
What would v prime be?
Four e to, oh my gosh, four e to four y.
E to the four y, but then what's the derivative of four y? Four. Py dx. And remember, that does matter, you have to keep that in there. Okay? Then from there, we would do this diagonal plus this one, or vice versa, doesn't matter. So three e to the four y plus, and then I would have three x times four, what is three x times four?
It's three x times four?
Yep. So that'd be twelve x e to the four y dy dx. Now, a lot of times, it will say in terms of x and y, do you remember that? And if that was the case, you'd have to take this out and you'd plug that in instead. But since it doesn't say to do that, we're good. Then where does it want the value at?
At true.
Two. And so if x is two, I, then what is our point?
Zero.
Sneaky, okay, two, zero is our point. Cuz remember, you would have to have both of those in order for you to be able to plug it in, you can't only have an x, you'd need a y as well. So d squared y dx squared at two comma zero equals, it'd be three e to the four times zero plus twelve x is two, e to the four times zero. And then when I get to my dy dx, you have two choices. You can either sub this entire formula back in or just find it at two, zero, which is what I'm gonna do. So if I plug in two here and zero here, that'd be three times two e to the zero, that'd be what?
Six.
Six. And then I can just sub that in right there. Then remember, e to the zeros are both gonna cross out, that's a one, that's a one. So it'd be three plus twenty-four times six, and you can just leave it like that. Now, question, if it asks you about concavity, that would be what?
Uh, concave.
That's greater than zero, therefore, y is concave up. So remember, those are the kinds of questions that they're typically gonna ask you there. Okay. Man, we didn't get through that much, huh? We're just tooting around. Okay, let's do number nine, we'll do this as the last one. Okay, it says, what is the approximation for f of point five found by using the line tangent to the graph at zero? So, you know what to do, write the equation of the tangent line. And then what are you gonna do after that? And then you're gonna plug in point five, and you don't get a calculator, but you can do it. So try to find your point, then try to find your slope.
It's just gonna be a square root.
At least do the point. And then I can maybe help you with the derivative if you need it.
How do you know it's zero? Oh, awesome.
Yeah, it says at the end, at zero. Okay, if you didn't take the square root, you don't put a plus minus on it. So if it didn't start off as like x squared equals or something like that, it's not a choice, it's just automatically positive. Or if they put a negative in front, it would be automatically negative. So e to the zero here comes out to be what? One, plus three is four, square to four is two. Okay, for your derivative, where do you start?
Okay, it would be e to the x plus three to the half.
Good. So you would have to rewrite that as a one half power so that you can take the derivative. So now, we're gonna do chain rule, I'm gonna give you a minute to try to do it on your own before I do it with you, so try to take your derivative, we'd call that f prime. And then from there, you would find f prime at zero after that.
Would you add it?
You multiply it at that. So my one half is gonna times down to the front, what is the new power on e to the x plus three? Negative one half, and then I have to times by the derivative of the middle, what's the derivative of e to the x plus three? E to the x. Then what I would do from there is, if this is a negative power, I would write it as one half, and then e to the x gets to stay, but square root crap has to go down to the bottom. And notice, how do we know that it's a square root? Well, because it was a one half and it was negative, that means it belongs on the bottom. Then from there, we're finding the slope at what value? X equals what? Zero. So e to the zero on top, what would we get? One, and then e to the zero on bottom, we have kinda deja vu here, right? That'd be one plus three is four, square to four is two. So half times half is?
A fourth.
A fourth. Now, remember, that's not all. Now, what do we need to do with our equation of our tangent line after we write it? Plug in point five. So go ahead and, um, write your equation. The one thing I would suggest is, rather than doing a fourth, I'd probably change that to point two five. Okay, that's one of the decimals you should be familiar with enough to switch to a decimal from a fraction. Uh, and then that would be x minus zero. Okay, so we're plugging in point five. And point five, actually, maybe it would be easier to keep this one as a fraction. We have y minus two, what was this, we said? A fourth, and what is point five the same as? A half. Half minus one stays a half, so really, that's a what?
Eight.
Y minus two equals one eighth. And then what would we do with our two? Plus two across. And so if it's two plus an eighth, is that two point one two five or two point two five? This would be two and a fourth, so we know it'd have to be c at that point. Make sense? Good job. Okay, so remember, you can finish all the rest of the questions and come back and check it later. Um, and then if you have your purple sheet, I'll sign it for you. And have fun sleeping in tomorrow. Uh, derivatives and applications. Look at you guys. Sue, you're done. What are we gonna do without you? Good, what I like right here. Wow, you too is in. There you go. There is, and Thursday. Guff, hi Ellen, have a good day. Don't forget to put your name on it. So no one steals your signature, Anthony. I know, you'd have to come again. Oh, yeah, no prob. I always forget to turn this off.